Meeting back to order. And we have in front of us what was requested of our district engineer. So is someone willing to make a motion at this time with this in front of us?
If you can read the motion, Mr. Tinkle.
I think we ought to read it after all that we've been going through.
Yes, sir.
We got an audience out here who wonders what the heck we're doing.
This resolution is to...
They have a right.
So do I up here. This resolution is to provide direction to our district engineer Tetra Tech Inc. to proceed with the completion of the design for the remaining eight Phase One ponds, not lakes, with a mixed solution approach as previously presented to the board on August 17th, 2017. That's my motion.
On seconded that motion, Madam Chairman, I think we ought to ask the audience if they have any comments on this item.
Yes, that was my next intention.
Sorry.
Does anyone out in the audience have anything they'd like to say on this motion? Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you Supervisor Guy for requesting an audience to make a comment. I agree with the comments that Tetra Tech made about not wanting to do the cheapest method. Thank you very much. We don't want cheap. We want really well done, economical, so you're spending our tax dollars wisely. Thank you very much.
But we want it to be long lasting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I will call the motion. All in favor?
That's called a false start, Bill.
I've done that before myself, Bill.
Go back to the starting line.
Any opposed?
Aye. I was kind of discombobulated.
All in favor, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, we move to District Manager.
I just have a few items. Henderson, Franklin, update our human resources manual for the district.
And that work has been completed. We met with the staff over there to discuss some specifics. There's a few edits that we made and we'll be bringing that to the next board meeting for approval.
Okay.
Is Henderson or Franklin, are they...
HR firm.
Is it local or are they just a...
Fort Myers.
They're downtown.
Yeah, they've been in the business for a long time. I'll be bringing up consultant selection for utility rate study. Last couple of days, Mr. Di Cerbo was in town and met with him and we went over six of the elements from his scope of work that we're going to be working on over the next two to three weeks and we'll bring those to you in November and they have to do with communications, white papers that we'll be working on for development. And one other thing I wanted to bring up too seemed to cause a little consternation but there was Eagle Point seemed to have turned into a dumping site for a lot of refuse over there. There were residents coming out of the different subdivisions putting in there and we blocked up and put a sign up but there was some finger pointing done at the HOA president and I just wanted to say that when I was over there the day after the storm, there was a tree block in the road and they wanted to know if they could move it out there, a contractor, to cut it. And I said, "If it's an emergency, it's blocking the road, go ahead." Well, the next day, Mike and I were out and we saw a contractor over in Town Lake and he was dumping some of that material up there and I asked him, I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, so-and-so told me I could move this up here." And I said, "Wait a second. What are you talking about? How did you get in contact with them?" "Oh, I was cutting a tree on their property and it was one and we took it over to the park." And I said, "Well, did they give you permission to dump stuff over at the park?" "No, they didn't. We just assumed we could take it there." And I presented to him that we would probably be coming back for him either to take a contribution to dump that material or have him remove that material. But some of the finger pointing that was going on at some people over there was totally an error. And I just wanted to go on the record to state that, that contractor was not given permission by that person and he stated us the same thing, both Mike and I, when we were talking to him.
Everything that's come out, the indication has been that the storm debris is to be placed at the curb on the public right of way in front of your property. Man, where did all those trees on that FPL easement come from that were right there? I don't remember seeing any trees back there as far as you can see. It wasn't ever trees but boy, there was some big dudes sitting there. Where'd those things come from?
There's contractors and we've seen people come out of the subdivision adjacent that and dump, you know, pull in and dump it there. And also, we've been dumping some of the material at the pool that Mainscape's been doing and after hours, people have been driving in there and offloading their pickup trucks or their trailers, so. But that's all I have.
Sir, Chris, any, there was, I think Jim or somebody might have brought it up earlier. Do we know what the estimated time is from FEMA getting to our area? I mean, just, I know you don't have a date, but any idea?
They will not commit.
They will not.
And we are in touch with them and we actually volunteered to use the pool site because it's 22 acres as a site to, you know, a temporary storage. And right now, they were having some issues with certification. They still might. And we are also pursuing a private contractor to come up there and bring an air curtain in to burn it and a chipper. So we'll start moving forward to dispose of it and, you know, if we can get reimbursement for it, great, but we aren't going to sit on the sidelines and wait and watch.
Okay.
Madam Chairman. Chris, on your report, the consultant selection for utility rate study...
Yes, sir.
How many firms responded to your request?
Three.
Was one of them the one that we had previously?
Yes, sir.
And have you made a decision on who's going to do it yet?
We have a recommendation and the previous consultant now doesn't work for himself. His firm was bought out by one of the big engineering firms and the pricing he sent us was twice that of the two other bidders. And I'll bring that up in the agenda item.
Thank you, Chris.
And I think Mike is up next with Public Works and he can discuss some of that cleanup and the issues we're grappling with.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager.
Hurricane Irma cleanup summary. As you can tell, we've been cutting lots of trees out there and having our contractor stack them in the right of way. One of the things I was going to ask, we had initially gone through with Mainscape and done a sweep through Gateway Boulevard and taken away the smaller branches and limbs and things. The county is actually out there now with the bucket truck that you see out on Gateway Boulevard is actually, that's not part of our forces. Those are Lee County's has hired those people. But one of the things that have come up is we, you know, waiting and waiting and waiting for FEMA, and I know the residents are not happy about that. We can, we met with Mainscape today to come in and do tree removal or the branches and things that are on Gateway Boulevard on Griffin and up in Stony Brook. They are available to do that. It's just, you know, how much is the board willing to pay to make that happen? We previously, to date, I'll give you a list of invoices to date.
I know that while you're handing these out, I'll just say that the Stony Brook RHOA was sent documentation from Lee County to be, for vendors to be allowed into the gated community that had to be signed and sent back.
Yep.
So if there's any of the other gated communities that aren't aware of that, they need to get in touch with Lee County to...
I think they called me and I said they wanted a point of contact and I sent them to Chris and I think Chris then sent out a blast email and I know our HOA sent out a blast email, so...
Thank you.
Everybody should know about it, but if you're in a gated community and you haven't signed that, they won't come in.
Exactly. I just wanted to, you know, state that publicly that if anybody's not aware of it, they should find out from Lee County.
So you and Fort Myers have the same thing.
Yeah.
So as you can see, to date, just with the contractors that I've been working with, we've incurred $70,000 worth of cleanup. That doesn't include the ongoing tree work that I haven't gotten invoices for yet. In speaking with Mainscape to do the cleanup on Gateway Boulevard on Griffin and at Stony Brook, they said the level of effort would be approximately equivalent to what they had done already in terms of at least $30,000 to clean up Gateway Boulevard and Griffin and Stony Brook.
And that's just cutting and stacking?
No, that's removal.
Total removal.
The stuff has already been cut, it's down, it's out there, it's laying out there.
Mike, do we have any insurance relief on this at all?
I prefer that Chris...
Yep, we're working on that and what you do is you have to submit it first to our insurance carrier and if they deny it, we can submit to FEMA. And FEMA won't take it until our insurance carrier denies it. So we'll go through FMIT first.
Okay, well, we kind of did that in the HOA and the problem we ran into is that if we went out and awarded the contract and FEMA didn't endorse the contract, no reimbursement. Because what they were worried about is you go and cut a deal with a guy for $50,000 and then somebody gets the right idea, well, you know, an invoice from you for $100,000 would be a real good number. FEMA's, they don't want any part of that. And if you wait for FEMA, like they said in the paper the other day, at the rate they're going, it'll be 442 days, we're not waiting that long. Can't wait that long.
As opposed to what?
We're going to go get our own vendor and do it, Mike the bullet. Probably going to cost $45,000 bucks. Total removal.
You're talking about in Gateway Greens?
Gateway Greens, that's 11 miles of streets. We don't have any choice. I'm afraid somebody's going to throw a match down in front of these houses. That stuff's going to burn like crazy. So we just can't take that chance. That's why I was wondering how we're setting our insurance, because we have no insurance.
And on top of this, I didn't have, I didn't put the quote on here, but the, all the street signs that got taken down, that's another $22,000 that...
In addition?
In addition to this.
$22,000 for stop signs and that kind of stuff?
Stop signs, road signs, all the...
$22,000?
Crosswalks.
Signs are about $1,500 a crack.
Very expensive.
Not you.
No.
I think I'm going to start a business.
You had indicated that there was, some of these that you wanted us to go ahead and approve payment of because they're smaller vendors.
Yes, ma'am.
Which ones are those that you...
That was Elite Tree Management. It's a small company.
Mrs. Expro.
They've been doing work since we brought them in just after the storm and they've been working for us since then. So I would ask that we be able to go ahead and process the invoices and pay the POs to this small vendor.
Do we have to authorize that? I mean, is that required for...
I don't know.
Anything, anything over...
Over $10,000 for our board approval.
Even in the emergency?
There's no caveat there for approval by...
That was one of the things we were talking about as we, as we move forward to, in the future, revise some of the policies to give the district manager signing authority up to self-managing.
So you guys are looking for an after the fact motion?
Yeah, and what you also may want to do is part of that is bring back the next board meeting a resolution amending that authorization resolution to provide a greater dollar amount for the Hurricane Irma cleanup.
Or emergency?
Emergency indoor Hurricane Irma cleanup.
So is it just the one invoice or are you wanting approval for all of this?
The Elite Landscape Management is the one that I'm primarily concerned with. The Anchor Tree Service is another firm that's not real large, but that one is also over $10,000, so...
These things ought to be paid. Yes, they should be paid. They did the work.
Yeah.
All right. I make the motion to approve these and as Tony indicated, bring it back at the next meeting, language to allow us to maybe facilitate this going a little quicker in case of an emergency.
With regards to the cleanup on Gateway Griffin, would you like me to move forward with Mainscape to have them clean up Gateway Boulevard, Gateway, Griffin, drive?
Mainscape's one of the few vendors that have a place to dump because the county shut off most of these places. They, most of these guys, like over Gateway Greens, we get about 15, 20 of these guys, they can't take the stuff out because they have no place to take it.
We're allowing them to take it to the community, the Commons Pool area.
If you've got a good deal with Mainscape that's reasonable, I'd stick with it.
And I would imagine that cut, removal and basically reposition in a Commons area is at a reduced rate versus if they were to actually clean and haul, right?
Correct, because they don't have to haul so far. It's quicker turnaround, it expedites removal.
And these are, this is all stuff that we can at least apply to FEMA for reimbursement for at some point in time?
To our insurance. We don't know yet.
Yeah, I mean, I know the insurance has to say no, but we know they're going to say no.
You got a good chance for the signs.
Okay, so Mr. Tinkle made a motion to approve these invoices so that we can get these gentlemen, these companies paid so they'll continue to do work for us. Do you have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Guy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So Michael, in regards to your last request, which is, do you want board direction to continue the cleanup of Gateway Boulevard? If we say yes, what we're essentially doing, Chris, is approving the clean and reallocating the debris over to the Commons Park. So we're taking a risk there that FEMA may not pick it up and we'll have to figure out some other means. So I think that's the point of consideration for us is, are we willing to take a gamble in order to get the streets clean? And we may have to, you know, eat that cost of removal or burning or whatever that solution is. And I can't remember, did you have a quote on that, the burning?
I do not. I've talked to the contractor and we look at doing a combination of bringing a chipper over to the pool area and then also, you know, burning that and then possibly even setting up a little pay station where we can handle the product from other people to cover our costs for doing that.
Okay.
But that's really to clean up, will be to clean up the debris at the pool and also at Eagle Point.
Do you know when you're going to get those estimates in? Because I'd like to know what that's going to cost us in comparison to FEMA reimbursement and weighing that against just the overall desire to get the streets clean.
I'd say in the next two days, I'll have that number.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already talked about it and asked them for it and I think it's just...
If we're going to move a whole bunch of debris close to the pool, I would like to make sure we keep it away from the pool. If that stuff catches fire, I don't want the pool area to be in danger.
It's on the perimeter.
Well, I know, but I have been surprised before, not here, but other places when I didn't make it clear to somebody what I thought should have been clear. If we have a fire, we sure as heck don't want to end up with worse off than we were before. And Madam Chairman, from everything I read, I'm thinking any reimbursement from FEMA is like...
Long time off.
Whisten by the graveyard. They've spent so much money now and got all of their stuff in Puerto Rico to do.
Not to happen.
I don't think we've got a chance of getting anything out of them.
Well, we'll have to see, but, I mean, it's a matter of, the question is, do we want to wait and the vendors are going to be coming in and cleaning up all of Lee County and we're on the list somewhere? Or do we want to wait or do we want to expend money to remove it?
I think Mr. Tinkle made the, a great reason for moving this stuff before it makes more trouble for us when we head down.
I'm also worried about snakes and rats.
And also, Chris, is it your, what would be your direction on other communities wanting to relocate their debris to the common area?
Well, there's only so much we can take and if we, you know, if we move that debris in, it is 22 acres, but usable, it's probably about 12, so I wanted to take care of what we're doing first with Mainscape and our folks.
And then assess and then...
And if we get it set up where we're chipping and burning, then obviously we could bring more volume in because we won't be adding any net volume, but I don't want to end up with a jungle up there.
Yeah, and I have a concern whether or not the district has ability to do that, whether or not we need other permits and approvals and licenses to do all that.
You have to have a license buyer.
Well, I'm just talking about the general powers of the district to engage in that activity, that kind of disposal of debris. So I can double check that. And also the liability issue with regards to operating basically a horticultural debris disposal operation.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. We probably have questions to get the answers to before we approve that. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, Mike, also, Mainscape said they wouldn't be able to take the big trunks of the trees, so those were going to stay there in the...
The large ones, we've actually, we have another contractor that's going to remove the stumps, the big stumps. We've already, and they've done locates and their Met Tower, who was actually one of our late contractors, has heavy equipment and he's going to be removing stumps for us.
And the big trunks?
Big pieces of the, the big pieces of trees, Mainscape said they can do that also. That's just a different, different equipment, a different crew. It would just, you know, add to the cost a bit.
Thank you.
So you'll bring that back to us. I think in two weeks, everyone can understand that we just got hit by a hurricane and things are going to take a while to clean up, so...
Bring back the pricing and permitting aspects if we have the authority.
Yes, please.
Did we go down the payment?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did go.
So with regards to Mainscape doing additional cleanup, can we wait on that?
Yes, please.
All right. Next item I had was the Girl Scout building. We have the church. One of the adjacent property owners and others said that they're going to be submitting to us and we have two property owners adjacent who have not signed the letter of no objection saying that they wanted to wait until after the board meeting for the Pinecrest HOA. I received an email, actually during the break, I went and checked my email and the cam from the Pinecrest HOA said that the HOA board has been working with their attorney but they haven't been able to come to a resolution, so they're basically still going to wait till their October 24th meeting before they make any decision. So I think that was the date that we had to respond to the Girl Scouts also. So we, at this time, we don't have the necessary letters of no objection to move forward to take to the county to try to do this administratively.
I mean, Tony, how complicated is this from a legal perspective?
Well, it's not. Well, assuming we get the letters of no objection, it's not. The question is whether or not they're willing to provide the letters of no objection.
Well, that's something from an HOA perspective, what...
I don't know. I've not read their bylaws or articles and I don't know what their desire is. And I think that becomes one of the relationship between the district and the residents of that community and/or the association.
I got, talked to the president of HOA. She said, "What we want is a documentation from our attorney telling us that the document says what you say it says it says." And that supposedly...
They want it from their attorney?
Their attorney, their attorney.
Question to...
Not me.
Tony supposedly has talked to him and he has given them an opinion. We don't know what it says. But the issue was, they wanted, the confusion was, and I understand the confusion, we were basically telling them two things. We were kind of giving them the impression we were going on a business and/or a neighborhood application. One wasn't applicable, so we got that back, scored away where we're going with that. So, and they want everything, essentially everything struck that was not purely just an office. That's it. If it had something else, we did that.
We did that.
What we're now trying to do is to make sure that their attorney understands, and I believe Tony has done that, that that's what we did.
Well, I don't even know. Again, I sent him the documents. He says he's provided his opinion. I asked him where his opinion was and he hasn't provided that opinion to me. He's going to tell them.
So our deal is, is that we have to wait till the October. And even if that gets us the HOA, that doesn't mean squat because we got two property owners that from what I'm hearing is, is that hell freezes over, they ain't going to sign it.
I don't think that's true.
So it's just not, it sounds to me like, well, our deadline is the date that they're meeting, so it's moot point. We can't meet the requirements, so we're going to have to go for the one-year procedure.
Well, no, and once again, we have to make a decision. I don't have a day in front of me, a go, no-go, either terminate the contract or ask for further extension. Or close with, you know, basically waiving that, right? And close and continue to pursue the zoning.
I talked to the two property owners involved and tried to explain to them, "Guys, by the way this mess was created, whatever the Girl Scouts wants to do and to whomever they want to sell it, everybody's going to jump through the same hoops we're jumping through. Only they may not be as lenient and cordial of eliminating Build the Cat House. They might leave that in there as a way to sell it." So these people over there, if they're willing to take and buy that on a one-year deal and making the change, and they're saying to them, "Hey, we're not going to write off and strike all these exclusions." Somebody else may not want to do that because it really ties your hands if you want to flip this place. They may not be willing to do that and those guys may get something that they may not want over there if we don't buy it. But I don't know what you do to tell them that. I've done it until I'm blue in the face and it's almost like some power that I've got that, "Watch you squirm awhile." And the deal is our squirming space is slim.
Tony, was there any indication from the Girl Scouts that they understand that they're waiting for the letters of no objection and they would continue, allow a...
No, in fact, I've been communicating with Sean, I just got an email from Sean Ellis today and I haven't read, first of all, they were confused why we even applied initially with a greater range of uses than just business and office. I think that's what irritated them to begin with. I can give him a call tomorrow and see if I can say, "Listen, we've narrowed it down. Here's why we're using this district." You know, he wants an explanation to tell you why we're using one district versus another. And the reason why is because of setbacks and minimum lot size.
Say it again.
Setback requirements and minimum lot size. The business slash commercial district that is being requested with the elimination of all uses other than office results in a district, if it's approved, that the property would be conforming as to size setbacks. One of the other districts that was recommended or discussed requires a minimum five acres and this is 1.4 acres. And another district had a setback of 50 feet, I think, or 48.6, we'd have to ask for variance. So...
It only fits into one?
Correct.
So can you put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Because I guess we're going to have to make a decision what we're doing.
Yes, we will.
So...
Yeah, and again, hopefully the Girl Scouts will recognize that, they're very frustrated but they're going to hopefully recognize that this is an issue that they would face come heck or high water, whether it's us or somebody else. And the, you know, the carrying cost of that building, whether or not they care about using it or not, they still have electricity and insurance and other items. But I think they want to make sure that we're proceeding in good faith and their patience may be not where it was earlier. I'll put a call on Mr. Ellis tomorrow and put on the next agenda. And you're right, from the standpoint of the neighbors, if they were, hopefully the confusion is over now as to what the uses are, what the district is and what the uses are because there was a disconnect there also.
Yeah.
And so hopefully they'll recognize that this is a good use for the community.
Mike, to clarify, the 24th is the drop dead day that we have to file all of those non-objects?
No, it was, the 24th had to do with our agreement with the Girl Scouts to...
Let me double check here. What is the drop dead date that we have to have to be able to get to the county to be able to satisfy the contract with Girl Scouts?
The zoning.
Zoning, yeah.
Right. I mean, the...
What's the last day we can take to the county, six signatures and get their approval such that we can buy this deal on the 7th or whatever the date was?
It takes, it's going to take administratively probably two to three weeks for them to process.
So we go back 21 days from November...
From the October 24th. We're already, I mean, we're already against the wall.
Okay, so, well, to be on the next agenda and we'll just, we'll make a decision at that time, what do we want to do?
Do we, do we have someone who's going to attend that...
Who's going to that October 24th meeting or whatever it is?
Well, you're a homeowner in there. How about if we elect you? We choose you.
Well, but the only problem that I have with that is, would that be considered...
You'd sacrifice...
I mean, would that be considered conflict of interest?
No, sir.
It would if you were living on that fence, but you don't live on that fence.
No, I don't think it a nearest to your benefit, special benefit or private gain. And how many residents or property owners are in that community?
Sixty, something.
Yeah, but I don't...
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
You volunteer to go?
Chris and I can go.
Thank you.
And that meeting will be here at 6 o'clock on the 24th.
So it's even in our building?
Yes.
And how much do we charge them?
That takes nerve. We're going to rezone it.
Next item, maybe Tony will say something. Gateway Boulevard, Griffin Drive, Commerce Lakes Drive West were formally accepted by Lee County. So that's good news. There was, I think Mr. Guy had said something, there was some sort of celebration.
I think we mentioned, I think we mentioned last time and I was going to get the bottles, small bottles or Corbels, so I will bring them next time.
No, they're in, I've got them in the refrigerator right now.
Which one is it though? There's about four or five types. I'm just kidding.
Okay, I'll have Diane crack it.
And then the last item was Griffin Drive, the new roadway lighting. Received an update from Bentley. The luminaires and the poles are in there. Currently painting the poles. That's going to still take, with all the things they're doing, another few weeks for them to finish preparing the, the poles. So, and speaking with Mr. Bentley, we're probably looking about a month out before we see new lighting on Griffin.
Okay.
That way we can illuminate all the debris on them.
Exactly.
Right, but before Michael, Lisa, if I can just, clarification for the record, the drop dead date for the district to decide whether or not it can get the putt amendment is November 6th. But I think the timing issue is the county takes a couple of weeks to process, probably three weeks, two, three weeks to process the submittal. So that's where the issue arises. If the Pinecrest HOA does not meet until the 24th, obviously we're not even going, if they approve it, we won't get a document until after the 24th and that leaves a total of, you know, 10 or so days. And that's the problem.
Long story short, you go 21 days back from November 6th.
Yeah, and that's the problem.
And we're quickly approaching that.
Yes.
I'm just disappointed with the whole, whole ordeal.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Utility manager.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager. I have some pictures and I have some videos from the, the last storm before the hurricane, the August storm. I'm going to go over with you all real fast and, but just to start off, we have worked, this week was our first full week for the utility staff without hurricane issues. We've finally gotten back to a normal footing. And we started going over all of our post stuff. We found, we identified 43 things that we needed to, that we either ran out of or were in need of for their, our emergency vehicle, emergency supplies. We came up with a big, very big list and we've been slowly kind of knocking them out. We, we converted the crane truck to an emergency vehicle and we've equipped it with everything that we can possibly think of. And some of the things that we, that we found that we wouldn't have found had, that we'd not had a hurricane and been in that kind of situation. And the crane truck seemed pretty much ideal for this. So we have gotten that pretty much stocked up and we are starting to knock out all the things that all the utility, the field people deemed, you know, that we really needed. We didn't have enough of, or we ran out of. So that is going along. And a bi-monthly management report will be available. It has all the information, a lot of really good trackable information, bad debt, unaccounted for water, water surigation build, irrigation pump, water bought, water loss. All that information will be available now. And it's really good. It has some really, there's some really good information in there, very informative. And I wanted to go start out with Stony Brook, the villages of Stony Brook. We have got 21 backflow preventers in that community, 11 of which have been broken already. They're in really bad, some of them are in really bad shape. And the problem is, in the two years that I've worked here, we've had three blowouts at that community. They have no stanchions in front of these. I have some pictures for you that'll give, kind of give you a better idea of what I'm talking about. But the problem is, especially the last one that happened, we get a call at 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning and our emergency, our, whoever's on call at the time is, has, goes out and we find a two-inch backflow preventer fully blown out. We call, we don't do, as the district, we don't handle backflow preventers. We handle up to the meter. Backflows are in front, are past the meter and usually up to the homeowners association to handle. This happened on the Labor, on Labor Day weekend and what happens was.
Is there a picture here?
Straight across. Okay, I'm going to blow that up a little bit. This is just your standard backflow preventer for, for one of them. And you can just kind of chug along. What happens is there's no stanchions there. There's nothing there to stop it. And what normally happens is somebody pulls into that parking spot. As you can see, go ahead, quick on the next one. There's another one. Nothing there to stop it. It's just sitting there on the side of the road, which is really not a very good idea at all. As you can see, this one has already been repaired at one time or another. Go ahead.
And is that one taller than the other? Are the sizes not standard?
They're ups, downs. They're, like, say this one's going in the opposite direction.
Jesus.
We don't know what's going on with this one. Go ahead. Oh, there you go. There's a perfect example right there. That one, this one was blown out, I believe in, I want to say March of last year, as you can see where the repair was made. Somebody backed into it. There's nothing there to stop it. It's just sitting there. Go ahead, the next one is to give you a better, look at that. Opens the door, hits the backflow preventer, boom. There you have it.
So when, when we've gone out there on our time and fixed these and stay on them, are we billing them for the work?
Well, what happened here, go ahead, to the next one. There's another, another perfect example. Somebody having a bad day and I paid attention to what they're doing, backs into it, swings too wide, hits it, boom, that one has been repaired before. Go ahead.
Have we met with this homeowners association?
I am getting ready to do that.
Yeah.
There's another one right there that's been repaired, as you can see at the top 90. See, there's 21 of them in there. 11 of them have been repaired already. This is Schedule 80. Go ahead, click it here. And there's, there's, go ahead and blow that one up. There's, there's the, the call we get at 2:30 in the morning, blown out. It's blowing all over their residence. It's blowing all over their front doors. It's blowing all over the sidewalk. It's blowing out all over the parking lot. Alls we can do is go up there and shut the meter off. But when we do that, in each one of these areas, it's eight residences that we completely knock out of water. You have no water. In this instance, this happened on a Saturday night, on Labor Day weekend. We tell the homeowners, well, all we can do is turn, shut the water off and stop the leak. Your homeowners association is responsible for repairing this. They called the homeowners association and they said, well, we'll be back Tuesday. Sorry about your luck. We, I get this to Chris and Chris is fixing. If it has to be repaired, we cannot leave these people for three days on holiday weekend without water.
We could.
We could.
The bottom line is they need to be putting something around.
Yes. We, I am meeting with him Tuesday, next, next Tuesday, Brett Rutland from Tropic Isles, property management. And I, you know, show him, show him this and, you know, you have to have, it would be in your best interest to put stanchions along these, something to block this. Because this one right here, when this happened, somebody tripped over it.
Somebody what?
Somebody tripped over it. They hit it and it's, it's, it's Schedule 80. If you hit it in the right spot, but.
Obviously you're not charging them enough, because it's not a deterrent yet.
Yeah.
But we're, we're meeting and, you know, we, we really like you to put some kind of protection in here so that at 3 o'clock in the morning, you know, what do we say? We say, well, alls we can do is shut your water off, because we're not responsible for this. And say on a Labor Day weekend and the lady that called it in, the resident, had said, well, we said, well, you're going to have to call your homeowners association and have them, have them call a plumber or somebody to come out here and fix it. She calls the, the Tropic Isles and they say, well, you know, we're off for the weekend. We'll be back Tuesday. Because it was Labor Day weekend. We'll be back Tuesday.
So Kenny, is there, with the size difference, is there any reason why they're, they're different sizes?
Probably because they've been repaired. They've been broken at one time or they've, they've shifted. They had a lot of trees next to these and, and happened as they were moved.
So what I would recommend is, when you meet with, you know, the, the management company, that you come with a formal recommendation of, here's what we would like you to install. And we do have some leverage there as far as being able to repair and, you know, Chris, I applaud him for taking the stance that we're going to not leave anyone without water. And I think that's our leverage point. If, if they do not do what we're basically recommending, it limits our ability to, to be lenient in those situations where we fix as opposed to not. So, but I would be very clear. This is what we, this is what we would like you to do, you know?
And we, we, I explained to him at 4 o'clock in the morning, like, I have to call an emergency crew in here. And it's not going to be cheap. And they don't want to come out at 4 o'clock in the morning to fix a two-inch line. They'll come out for something major. But to them, that's nothing major. They just turn off the water, we'll get out there. They ended up getting out, they were already on an emergency. They had to stop what they were doing to come out and fix this. And I explained to them, I said, you know, we're just going to send you the bill and what it's going to cost you is what it's going to cost you if you want to get up. We're recommending stanchions. You need to put some stanchions in there or move them into the middle where there are not so much. But there's five of them that you swing into that parking lot, a foot off and you're going to hit, you're going to knock out eight, knock out one of those two-inch backflows. No problem.
Kenny, when you meet with them, make sure that the president, their homeowners associations in that meeting, because what that, Cam will tell you with them in the presence, I have a feeling it's going to be two different things.
But we will, we will, I'm having this meeting with them Tuesday afternoon. And
That happened to me.
The next, the next one is the, the Arizo, the Pareto and there was Pestoia wastewater problems that we have been experiencing, especially through the hurricane. I mean, a hurricane's a hurricane, what happened. But with the, the storm, we found with the, especially at the Arizo station, the I and I was just out of control. What we found was, let me frame it this way. We were in real trouble with Stony Brook. And what happened was is that, that well completely filled up. All the stations were filled up. We could not push it into that force main fast enough to get it out of there. So what happened was is we had to go into Pelican Preserve and we have the Arizo master station that has, I think, 11 people on this system. The well is completely full. It's running two pumps with 11 people on the system. It is completely taxing our system. So what we had to do was go in there on the fly and try to figure out where the leak, what was happening. So what we ended up doing was going in and starting to pop the manholes. Majority of the manholes were underwater. The ones we found, then we just started following where the leaks went. And what we found were. This is what, this is what we found. This is a lift station, a master switch. Look how much fast that water is coming in. I think 11 people on this system. Water is pouring in this lift station. This is, I mean, just way, way, way too much for that kind of system. Okay, so what we got from here is we, we know we got a breach. We think we got multiple breaches. So what we go from here is we start following the manhole. Whatever, the majority of them are underwater. We start popping manholes. We find them at the intersections. Okay, it's coming this way. Okay. Okay, this is the first one. You can see it's swirling there. There's, it was hit by a truck. This area here is the staging area in front of Pestoia, going down Pestoia Avenue. Found it. It was run over by a truck, apparently.
What is it, a cleanout?
Sewer cleanout. These are, these are where, this is where all the breaches were. Right here.
So it's individual yard cleanout?
I have to say, I remind you, majority of the manholes in Pareto right now are underwater, underwater. And this is where we find them. We find that one. Then go to the next one. This is the one on Pareto. We find this one. They remove the, they remove the concrete block, open the lid. They channel the, channel the dirt, flow right into that manhole cover.
Purposefully?
Purposefully. This is done on purpose. Okay? And this is the next one. Closed, we cap both of those breaches. I'll zoom in on, on the second. There it goes. There's our, within 15 minutes of that, Stony Brook master station dropped five feet. So that's where it was coming from. Once we did that. So, it has three days after the, three days afterwards, you can see what happened. This one, I, you know, was hit by a truck, obviously. What are you going to do? It was just hit by a truck. And this whole area was completely underwater. Okay? Okay, that's the location. That's the location where it was, was moved. These guys were working here. I don't know if they were actually working at that place, the next one, but two doors down, the carpenters that were at there saw us coming down the road and popping manholes. And whoever did this took off. Because when we got there, the guys, two doors down, pointed. They knew what we were doing. They, they went that way. So whoever did that, but that's the location. Nobody lives at that residence. It's, I think, ready to get sold. I don't know. But they were working, draining the road. It was in front of, in front of their work here. So they, they popped that and they pulled the, the concrete cap over, opened up the thing. And then what they did was they funneled the dirt from into the road, so it funneled right into that. And it completely taxed our system. So that's, that's what we found. And it completely, it completely held us up. We had, I had to take two guys and go over there and run around trying to find what was going on. You should never have a station with 17 people taxing your system like that.
But we've seen it. What are we going to do about it? There's not much we can do.
Other than catch them when we're, when we're doing it. I mean, a lot of these buildings.
None of them were rat? Excuse me? None of them were rat?
Other than point the finger and saying, one, two, and ten, there they go.
Perhaps stall law enforcement.
Now with the hurricane. Okay, this is the Pestoia station. This is, has absolutely no one on it, has no power on it. The level is sitting at about 15 feet right there. So obviously we got some I and I here back. Say it doesn't have a house on it. The station doesn't even have the power on it. And it's sitting at 15 feet about right there. And that was four days after the storm, after the hurricane, that.
Just the one we had to redo that 24th day.
This one had a break. Both of them had to be redone. And so that, that, that just gives you a picture of the wastewater system, especially, especially with that Pestoia station. The, the, the Pareto station, I'd say, majority of those manholes were underwater. And there was no, once we capped those breaches, it pretty much killed it. But this one has nobody on it. There's no houses. There's no construction. There's no nothing. And that level is at 15 feet right there.
Did you, did you find the issue for that?
No, we, we don't know. We'd have to smoke test it. We would have to test it and go through and try to find out where.
Smoke testing down here and probably wastewater, wasted.
We don't know where this is. We don't know where exactly this breach is. We don't know. My guess is it's going, we're going to find it on this floor. That's where we're going to find it. The hurricane, it did the same exact thing with the Arizo station. But it, once it pumped down, cleared it. That was, that is a continuing problem with the, on the program.
Can we do this, Dave? Can you pass on to your people that the next time this happens, we're going to prosecute? We're coming after them.
Yeah, well, there's the statute.
Somebody over there is, and I know it's subs, subs, subs probably are doing this, but they, they need to know that this is not going to happen. I understand. Nobody does. It's true. So I think if we, if we let them know that we're going to prosecute, even if they don't speak English, they'll learn it real quick.
To say, oh, we are having problems with the stolen waters and stealing water in the straight pipe. We, we talked with NAR and that, we locked them for one. And that's pretty much fallen off ground. We have, we have B I R, field people having trouble. Nothing with what it was. And when I made it very clear that they would, that there was no need for them to be spilling water, we were tapping our lines. If they needed water that bad, they would provide water for them. And it was, it was, it was made very clear. But when I was there, it's been, stolen water issues, capping into our lines and straight pipe. But we went ahead and locked every route out there. So we didn't find one. They fucked that up.
If I may, if I may follow up also, what, what you've found residual to that is when you're pulling manholes now, there's two or three feet of sand in the lines. And we're also going to be pulling the pumps to see if they've been damaged by all that sand running through it in the active station. And we will be smoke testing some of the systems because. because in some areas, it will, it will show breaches, or at least some of those cleanout caps, um, and there's also one station that's, that goes underwater, but the whole adjacent parcel in the house next to it doesn't, and it was literally under two feet of water, and we'll be surveying that station and comparing it to the plans and see if it was constructed to design elevation.
Up, up north, we did a little trick, because we had this problem, especially in Appalachia. We went in and, at any type of new construction, we glued all the cleanouts until the houses were ready for sale, developer had to come back in, put in the screwed connection. If you wanted, you wanted to, you wanted to do it with a glued fitting, you're gonna get out the saw.
And they'll, they'll, they'll have debris over them, I mean, they're weak, it's, it turns into a, just for one cleanout, they'll have a dumpster on it, or you just, you just don't know. And we were going around searching for eddies, looking for the eddies where it was underwater, um...
Where it's dry and is normally wet.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks, Kenny.
All right. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any of the consent agenda items that they would like to vote?
No.
Then I'll take a motion.
A motion to accept consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda items four, A, B, and C? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this is the acceptance and conveyance of the Matarita Phase Three utilities, five A.
Sure, and I'll address that, um, basically, uh, it's to take over, the board's already accepted the conveyance of Matarita Two and Number Four, and, uh, this is Number Three, I think it somehow got overlooked last year, but all the documents are, uh, in order and place for the conveyance, and the staff's recommending approval of the transferring conveyance of Phase Three.
Okay, do you, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Non-diservance and encroachment agreement.
And, uh, that is a, basically, a homeowner who, who, uh, would like to extend his pool deck about nine point two feet, nine point...
I was gonna say...
We have something at the very end, Charles, I was just kidding.
Thank you. David, thank you.
But the homeowner would like to extend a pool and a deck at 10866 Pond Ridge Drive, and, uh, his neighbor has, back in 2010, was issued an, an encroachment agreement, um, that's ten feet in, and, uh, we don't see any problem with our maintenance, he has a couple existing very mature palm trees, uh, right there on the lake bank, and he will not be extending past those, or extending past the ten-foot encroachment of his neighbor. And from a maintenance standpoint, we don't have any issue with the pond bank getting in there to treat or work, so the staff was recommending approval of this agreement.
We denied it at our HOA because it did not, uh, it had the conflict of the LME, and we told them they had to come here.
Now, the, and, and I can look at these pictures, and it looks like the people on both sides of this also have things that are in the, the LME. Has there been any problems with flooding in this area? Do we need to get a release of liability in case of flooding issues on this, since they're gonna be in the LME?
He has to maintain the, uh, elevations that are pursuant to the development order, so how he's gonna do that, he's gonna build it up and go out, but he's got an elevation, what is it, four inches below the slab, is usually typically what the walkout is on a, a deal, as long as he maintains that.
Yeah, and from my perspective, since this is not part of the lake easement itself, it's a lake maintenance easement, that, that's typically not the area where it's designed for the water management, retention, or, I'm not sure, I'm not, if we ever need to maintain it, we need to remove it, we can, but it doesn't, I've never known them to pose a problem to be in a lake maintenance easement. When they get into the lake itself, or the drainage easement itself, then that might be more problematic. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about getting a release of liability.
Okay, just, that thought came through my brain.
No, and, um...
'Cause I can tell you that in the last flood, the water was well above the lake maintenance easement behind my house.
And I have the same question about flooding, and what it does, and what it, um, it will bring easement down, so that we have more above, instead of being up, it's, you know, be...
No, he still, he can't, he can't change the slope.
The slope, okay, well...
The only thing he's gonna be doing is covering the slope with the lanai in the, uh, encroached area.
Oh, the lake maintenance easement part, not the, not the lake itself, not the drainage easement.
Yeah, yeah, LME.
So the slope won't, so you won't lose any?
No, he can't change the slope.
Okay, just, that's my question.
Yeah, that slope will come up to where it's at, where it is right now, he's just going to build a structure right on that nine point two point, and then go back in. So when he has, when we have high water like we had with Herman Beach a couple of weeks ago, like he did on mine, was, went over my pool deck and into the water, into the swimming pool, got that high.
I assume this is your lot, hello?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Brian McCowsky, 10866 Pond Ridge Drive, thank you for hearing our request. Uh, very good question there, during the hurricane and during the storm, our neighbor who has this very same situation, who's actually protruding out a little further than where we are, the water never came up within ten or fifteen feet of where they are, so they did a really good job on the slope of the lake, and I've been there seven years, so we've never seen anything. We were concerned about that as well, because we don't want any issues, either, I'm also a certified building contractor, so I'll be doing the work without, you know, with a full subcontractor, so make sure that we do everything by the book, and they did prefer us to come here and talk to you guys about it, so.
All right.
Madam Sherman, one other thing, the form of the agreement, the owner identifies the district from any loss, cost, expense, et cetera, arising out of the construction, installation, use, existence, or of, of his improvement, so he's holding us harmless. It's in the agreement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
We look forward to swimming in your pool.
Better do a good job.
I got four boys, too, don't worry.
Mr. Guy will bring the champagne.
Appointment of P-PAC Capital Reserve Study Group.
Well, I'll take care of this, uh, I don't see anyone from P, oh, Mr. Measy, would you like to address this, or would you like me to handle it?
Tom Measy, P-PAC, uh, we are undertaking a, an updating of our capital reserve study, and, uh, we want to appoint a work group to do this, there's a member of the, uh, P-PAC who is, um, Ron DePonte, who's heading it up, but we would also like to put on this committee of two at this point, Philip Rovner, and I think you have in your, in your board book all of his background, and he's a person who will help us with this, we will also be working in conjunction with the staff, uh, in order to undertake the study, they've already started a lot of the work on, and we'd just like Philip Rovner to be covered and be appointed.
I've, I've had the occasion to, uh, work with him back, uh, a couple of months ago, and, uh, he was, had some business relationships that was tightening down, he wasn't able to get involved in community stuff, but, uh, in discussing affairs, fellow preserve stuff, very sharp.
Very sharp.
Very sharp.
Is that a motion to approve?
That's a motion to approve, he's very good.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil. And next here, approved consultant selection utility rate study.
I'll address that, we put out a, a request for proposal, um, for a utility rate study. Burton Associates did the last one in 2013, um, that last rate increase will take effect in January of 2018, it's a very modest increase, and when we did some financial analysis and looking at some of our systems, um, we, I think we have some inequities in the irrigation rates, and that our water and wastewater system are actually subsidizing the irrigation system, um, because of the low rate, we're also looking at putting in a dedicated, uh, reserve, I mean, replacement and renewal, um, into that, and also the last rate study did not have a lot of capital, um, in it, so we've in, uh, included in this all the capital that we've been projecting for the utility study, and we will also be, uh, working at the same time to update our procedures and operations, including liens for bad debt, um, some of our operational issues we have that are a little cloudy, and updating those, and, uh, and, uh, this should be wrapping it up and, uh, coming to the board late February or March for considerations, so cou- couple months to do the work.
And are we looking at a stormwater fee at all?
We're looking at that as part of the assessment.
It's the assessment methodology.
Methodology study we're also working on, and that's out for RFP right now also.
All right.
And this is strictly water, wastewater, and irrigation system, and, uh, Chuck Lewis has been working with us the past couple months, and he's been working with Leslie, we've, uh, put together a lot of the basic work that consultants will ask for in a rate study like this, and, uh, I, I think some of the prices might bear that out, but the, uh, the top price that came in was just a little over sixty thousand, and this was the lowest at twenty-nine-eight, and we also had, uh, Mr. Ori submit, who was just a little over thirty thousand, but he is the rate consultant for Lee County, and we didn't think it was appropriate that he be our consultant.
Conflict of interest there.
He and I have not, uh...
But we'll give him props for trying. But that's our recommendation, um, with Wildon, um, I, I know some of the folks there, they did some rate work, um, in Hernando County with us there, and, uh, that is their specialty, and they're a smaller boutique firm in Orlando, and, uh, they do solid work, and they'll also work with our staff in training.
Chuck, Chuck's very impressed with them, and on that, I'd make a motion to retain...
Okay, Mr. Guy, you had a question?
Yes.
Well, I'll second, if you, second for discussion.
Second for discussion, all right.
Chris, two things. One, am I correct in expecting that the, uh, the expense of this will be against the enterprise fund?
Yes, sir.
Secondly, Mr. Tinkle, before he was a board member, used to make, uh, some comments about the amount of water that we charge residents versus the amount of water that comes out of the, uh, Lee County meter.
Goes into the deal.
Oh, thank you. Anyway, are you still, you still have concerns about that?
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be part of this?
Yes, it is, Chuck, Chuck has the same concerns, and it will be addressed.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for bringing it up, Bill.
Anybody else have...
No, there's a solution that keeps them quiet on, on topics I haven't been very...
Second. I won't take that personal.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept the recommendation of staff to hire Wildon Financial Services. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, all in favor. Last is five E, approve expenditure for irrigation high-service pump.
And I'll address this, too, last year, we did buy one new, um, Wilo seventy-five horsepower pump that seems to be performing at twenty-one hundred gallons a minute in the system, um, most of the other pumps we have out there are original and have been rebuilt a couple times, so this will be a second brand-new seven, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty horse Wilo pump, um, that will add to the system, and, uh, this was budgeted for this year.
Okay, that was my question, was it budgeted?
Yes, and, and the rate study was also budgeted.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this item expenditure for irrigation high-service pump, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You've got your new pump, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, six A is P-PAC report.
You have the written report in your, in your board book, the only thing that I would like to, uh, bring your attention to and ask your approval for is that we wanna spend some money on repairing streetlights, uh, on tree line, Pelican Reserve, uh, Boulevard, and also on, actually, Benito Drive, which I was not mentioned in the, in the written report, and we're gonna also take this as an opportunity to put in some of these LED upgrades in the lights, so we want your approval for eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars to do this work, it's not in the budget, but we have the funds available to do it from other sources.
Move through a little bit, I'll tell you.
Second.
Okay, uh, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've got your new streetlights.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, question for Phil. Some of these, uh, emails going back and forth that I mentioned earlier with, uh, Bob Gepper, uh, that brought out an issue that I, for the life of me, I don't understand, Tyler might be able to explain it, why on earth did the tree line drainage system come backwards two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty yards into Pelican Reserve, east of the road, to come to a box behind weir two and dump that street water when Mother Nature says, "Take it the other way"? Why, why was that done?
Ed, I...
I've never seen anything that silly in my life.
Well, I don't...
You're running water uphill. I mean, it just aggravates the situation in Pelican Reserve, and there's gotta be a reason that somebody, but, engineering-wise, I've never seen anybody do anything like that. Run it two-hundred-and-fifty yards east when it drabities west.
I have to talk to the engineer.
Around here, I don't, not many I can talk to. It just doesn't make sense, but what it does make sense of, it's causing problems with water. Every drop of water we pour in on the backside of your weir, backflows up into especially those first areas on both sides of the canal, the, the channel, are so susceptible to, you know, you spit over there, and it goes up in somebody's yard, uh, but I didn't understand why, did, did somebody have any ideas to why that was done?
I, I certainly don't know if those they do.
How are you knowing about that?
Obviously, we, we have, and so we, as a result, we have flooding issues in our neighborhoods.
I know, I know, it makes no sense.
Bill, you certainly have, uh...
Yeah, it's down in your neck of the woods, Bill.
I'm looking for an answer. You've got good questions, Ed.
So, so am I.
The answer, yeah, I...
My deal is a concrete plug, Alabor.
You know, we just, we just had a tremendous amount of flood.
I know, it, it makes no sense, I, I don't get it.
In a lot of the communities, uh, my community looked like a river.
Well, when we're trying to get water out of an area, sitting there taking a highly, uh, impermeable surface, like a concrete road, and dumping that on top of it, why? I don't get it.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay, oh, one other thing I might add is that we're, we have some cleanup issues as well, that we're working with, with Chris on, um, but they're not major, they're not anywhere near what you're facing in, in the rest of Gateway, so we...
You didn't get all the oak trees we got?
Yeah, we can, we can cover most of, most of what's occurred.
Hey, and Phil, one second, does, does anybody have any interest in, uh, getting any explanation or any more, um, clarity on the, the P-PAC vote to restrict the golf carts? To the first speaker, uh, about the P-PAC's decision?
I would, I would like to ask that you hold off on that.
Okay.
Will we formally bring it to this?
Okay, that's fine.
Jane, Jane brought it up, but, but we have, we will formally bring it, and, and then you can make a decision as to what you...
I respect that, thank you.
But we will have a, we will have a proposal with regard to that.
Thank you, Kenny. Zuer to supervisor comments, and I will start down here with Mrs. Flaherty.
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Guy?
Uh, none, as a matter of truth.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, none for me.
Mr. Tinkle?
I'll take care of it.
Whoa, I'm shocked. I have none, so I will call for adjournment, and the time is...
Five forty-seven.
Five forty-seven, thank you.
Thank you.
You've got one.
My K and N filter comes in tomorrow.
Yeah, so, so big to be why that flow off that road comes back that direction. Yeah, so it's going to be why that flow off that road comes back that direction.
Yeah. I would have liked that six feet.